Let's call to order the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, July 30, 2015. First order is to approve the minutes. I had some corrections on the minutes. Just little typos and things that I'd rather just hand them to Sue if that's all right with you all. Anyone else have any comments? All in favor?
I.
I need a motion.
I don't think I have a motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Any announcements?
The only announcement is that we still have a regularly scheduled meeting in advance. And we have practically been putting together the rest of the comments that we received from the working group. And we'll probably have them today or tomorrow.
If you do this theoretically, you can do it. I can PDF it and send it to you before I leave today.
Okay, and if that happens, I will make another draw.
And there are comments on different sections besides Section 3?
Yeah. They get into a little bit more of the uses?
There's some stuff on Part 2, there's some stuff on parts of Part 3 that aren't covered in here. So the PUDs and the streets.
And just, did they get it to you in time? Like the, as, okay, thanks. Okay.
I mean, there is no deadline. It's, they got it when we suggested.
Suggest, okay.
Yeah, I know these are coming kind of short notice to you guys, so apologies, but it took a lot to go through them, too.
That's fine. Don't apologize for that.
Okay, so, any public comment? There's no members of the public here, so let's get right into the land use regulation work session. Who wants to start?
Well, so I thought we could go through the remaining, you know, we received a bunch of comments on the zoning districts. And so I had prepared some recommendations on the ones that we hadn't gone through. And I don't know, you know, if there's one, if you had a chance to review it and there were things that stuck out to you, then we can talk about those. I don't know how you want to do it to move this along, what we've seen.
I was just a little confused about the color coding, because this color coding is very handy, but I didn't know whether this had the same.
I could have, I should have done it. It didn't. So I didn't prepare these branding in the others. It has to do with the zoning districts. So, for example, on number 3, this was an area that we had zoned as rural, and we're suggesting that it be changed to rural residential. So it's the color to the zoning map. We were trying to pretty it up, and I probably should have.
Yeah, I thought this was very clear in terms of a suggestion action.
It was awful.
And this lesser. So I probably want to go with this.
Crazy. I think, I think these, this document, the summer color lines, might actually require the planning commission to engage a little bit more in the discussion before a clear outcome is arrived at. Is that fair?
Okay, so this first one is the one that Brandy has the little memo.
Yeah, I have a memo about something.
An email.
Okay, yes, oh, yes.
That one.
Yes, okay.
Hi, Rachel. What's your knees down to? Should be okay on an angle.
I kicked it.
What?
I kicked it.
It wasn't very long.
Yeah, they roll out.
Oh, it's okay, thanks.
So 1 and 2 aren't on this because we had discussed that in the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and I forget what the, what the, 1, we rejected and we left as?
Who?
Didn't we?
Yes.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Well, one of them was the idea of adding a village, or adding a neighborhood center to the rural business.
Right, right, and I thought we.
We said no to that one at the last meeting.
Yeah, so that was number 1. That's the right bit. And then, number 2 was?
Number 2, we had talked about, oh, it's the area all up around, it's just the reservoir. And their suggestion there was to make it.
I have a distinct no from the last meeting of that location.
Right.
So we had it rural, and they wanted to make it rural residential. Right, and yeah, and I also have a distinct no.
Yes.
Yeah.
So then we're down, so then we're back to 3 here, right?
Right, and then the rest are on here.
Right.
Can I ask a quick question since I missed the last meeting, and I'm a little confused about, who are the comments, who is this working group? What is this entity?
They sent a letter.
And I saw, I saw the letter, I'm just curious, like, is it an entity, or is it a?
No, it's a group, I'll be blunt, it's a group of developers mostly, or people with economic interests who got together, and I guess they had planned to go over, they had the old version of the zoning, the draft zoning. And they were going through it, but I guess they went through it kind of slowly, so it was only finally the last meeting that they brought a huge pile of potential changes.
Yeah.
So, some of them, so we talked about some of them in that meeting, and then these guys were nice enough to like go through and catalog each one and make these matricies?
Thank you.
If that's what they are.
Yeah.
And there's more that they have submitted.
That second packet is the bonus packet of?
Yes, that's how we feel about it, that's for sure.
Yeah, so there's more, and then Brandy is going to attempt to get those kind of vetted today so that we can get them for funding.
Okay, thank you for helping me. I was, it seemed very formal, and I was kind of curious what this entity was.
Well, and I think it's interesting, honestly, because they're coming with some very specific knowledge, you know? They all have been involved in various developments in town, so they kind of know what it is, feet on the ground to like get stuff done. But, you know, from my point of view, there's this obvious tension between the development community and the planning community, and so it's like trying to like hold the tension in between those two.
Okay, great, and the public comments that were not a part of that, are those in here as well, or is that it just?
They've kind of already been incorporated because we've got them in January, February, March.
That's right, okay. Thank you for helping me understand, I was just, I was just a little.
And in some cases, some of the changes that we made since February.
Were changes they?
Were changes that this working group suggested and didn't see.
Oh, okay.
So some of those things just became loopholes.
So there's a kind of version control problem between the document, the base document that they're working on and the evolution of the document that we're working on.
Thank you for bringing it to the table, thank you. So the first area that we're looking at on their map is, is number 3. And this is, they were kind of recommending a split in the parcels, so part of it would go to residential, and part of it would go, the remainder would go to rural residential. So it would kind of come down to Abbott Road is kind of the rural part.
I lost my map.
Sorry, rural residential. One in your hand?
I have a hard time with even trying.
This?
No, not the one.
Did I just grab yours? I think I just grabbed yours.
Oh, fine, I just can't.
It's all right, it's like you're saying that you're looking for your glasses, and they're on your nose.
Yeah, well, that'll come about 5 minutes.
And so, so this is where Brandy did some build out. She looked at the parcels, we looked at them as a total. And kind of based on the numbers that we ran for those parcels. Basically, if we zoned it residential neighborhood, we would have over 1,100, you know, there would be the potential for over 1,100 units there, which is more.
1 dwelling unit, every 6,000 square feet.
Kind of the growth at the time of 50 years.
And you're looking at 78 acre parcels, so.
Yeah, without a lot of constraints.
Without a lot of constraints, so the map goes up pretty fast.
So we felt like a more reasonable approach would be to change it to rural residential, and then if there was a need for more housing, we could always, in the future, zone it residential neighborhood. But that's kind of more in keeping with, we're trying to direct development towards the eastern portion of town. But it is a change, and then if you do a conservation PUD, you can actually.
Still achieve.
You could do a development there anyway.
Right, yes, and you could achieve seriously high numbers with a conservation PUD.
Or a cottage.
Or a cottage cluster.
Is there an argument to be made to just leave it rural, which is what we had it originally?
I think the argument that they presented is that we haven't, we haven't necessarily designated areas that could take some growth.
Larger, and there's places for sort of small scale info, but there isn't really a lot of large open pieces in what was in the residential neighborhood.
And this is contiguous with the limits of the existing water sewer area, so.
So it's not unreasonable.
It's not unreasonable to think that you could add on in this location.
It doesn't have a lot of natural, I did look at the slopes and the wetlands, it isn't got a significant amount of constraints in like some of the other abutting lands, so it seems like a logical one.
Yeah, what is the, if we went with rural residential, what is the parcel, the maximum resources for the? It would be 1 unit per 1 and 1/2 acres.
And you could make smaller lots.
Yep.
You could cluster them and make smaller lots.
And so, you know, you could still get, on one of the parcels, you could get about, anywhere from 46 to 98 dwelling units, depended, depending on which.
How you did it.
You know, if you did a PUD, or if you did a conservation subdivision, and then.
That sounds like a lot.
Yeah.
To put it in context, ever since we've been here, we have permitted less than 10 freestanding, you know, dwelling units per year. Okay, so it's just, you know, even, even this lowest number, it represents 10 years, if every new home that got built in Brattleboro got built in this neighborhood, it's still, it would still take you more than, you know, more than 10 years to do it if you did it 10 years. And so it's just improbable.
Yeah, so that's, it seems like a perfectly fine compromise, creating some opportunity if the opportunity, you know, if it's needed.
Right.
So I think that seems a bit logical to make it rural residential. And, you know, as soon as Manhattan's underwater, we're going to have an influx of people.
But do we want them? And if we do want them, would we want them on this really nice piece of land?
Well, do you want them in a refugee center and a high school, or do you want them?
They are drastic.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not totally sold. So you, you are, guys are recommending as a group, and your professional recommendation it be changed to rural residential, the top, that it's almost like a rectangular-ish.
It's like Kansas.
It would be, no, we recommend the whole parcel.
Except we're not in Kansas anymore.
Actually, both, both that lighter yellow, and then the yellowish green, and then the lower green.
So you're recommending both Kansas and upside down Oklahoma.
Yeah, I think they'll show it on the map.
Upside down.
No, we got it, the Kansas and upside down Oklahoma.
I was like, Missouri? No.
Here on the map.
You people have spent too much time in a cartridge with no radio.
In this whole swath that's here. So those 2 fields, yeah. And I would connect down here, there's more rural residential down here in this corner, so it actually.
Currently, that whole area is what?
Rural.
It's all currently rural.
So it's 1 unit per 3 acres.
Isn't that Land Trust, Vermont Land?
No, no, I don't believe so. On the other side of 9, there is.
Yeah, I don't think it's Land Trust, there are, I think some of it's in current use.
So let's just review all the ways that the rural residential could be developed with a certain yield, because you were saying that there was a significant amount of units that could be clustered, or?
If it stayed, you mean if it stayed rural?
Yes.
As opposed to rural residential? Right? Yeah.
Okay, so you got?
So on the, the email from Brandy on the backside, so if you did a rural conventional subdivision, you would have about, on both parcels, you could get about 49, so that was just straight up noted as a, you know, assuming it would be like 1 and 1/2 acres. A rural conservation subdivision would give you 52 dwelling units. I mean, that kind of speaks to the fact that there's not constraints on this property because, you know, we're not taking out steep slopes or wetlands or. So I, I'm, maybe I'm missing something here, but why not just leave it rural, and then if somebody wants to build a development, they can propose a cottage cluster or a conservation?
That was mine.
The cottage cluster, as we have it written right now, does not apply to the rural district. That is something that comes up later in the comments, that may decide to make a different decision on than was made before, but that has a density bonus that allows you to double the units, and that's why it's not in the rural.
Right.
It's like if somebody wanted to do a cohabing community, they couldn't pop it down in a rural.
They could, they're just not going to get, I mean, they're not going to get the extra density bonus. And so that was the reason the cottage cluster, it's not that you couldn't build something in that form, it's just that you wouldn't be able to use that provision and get the doubling, double number of houses. You could use the conventional conservation subdivision.
So they could get about, a little less than, or approximately 25 units on each?
On each?
Yes.
As rural.
Considering the amount of development in Brattleboro in the past several years.
Well, I think the only, the only, you know, I'm kind of carrying your argument a little bit, but I think if you step back to the policy level, one observational criticism you could make of the zoning district map now is that it doesn't allow for continued growth of a, of the single-family home dwelling type in residential or rural residential. And that if you were going to provide for that, if you were going to make some kind of commitment to that, then this would be a logical area to do it because of its, it's contiguous with the water and sewer system. So from a policy standpoint, we don't want to encourage rural sprawl, and we don't want to encourage sprawl away from services, and we don't want to encourage it that far away from the Route 9 corridor. So it's fairly close to the Route 9 corridor, it backs onto the existing water and sewer, and it's a form of housing that there's a significant, albeit very quiet, market for. So there's ways in which, at a policy level, you could see justification for changing this to rural residential, and it would give a broader range of development strategies than if it was just rural. On the other hand, playing the other side, this is a tranquil, you know, wooded neighborhood that gives amenity to the suburban-style subdivisions that are between it and Route 9. Some of it's under current use currently, there's very little indication that it's, you know, that people are eager to market it for residential use. And so you could regard it as some kind of a amenity or buffer between a denser form of settlement and rural, the rural areas further to the south.
I'm a little concerned, this is, if I'm reading this map properly, this is, there are multiple farms along, it's at the bottom, the southern edge of this, is that right? This is where like, I can forget what the one is, right, the farm, Lilac Ridge?
This is closer in than Lilac Ridge, I think.
It's a former roads farm.
Yeah.
Where this split, though, where this, okay, this is Greenleaf, right? Where the line comes up the bottom, is this Greenleaf?
Yep.
So, Greenleaf, and then this is where?
Yep.
What's the split, right there, is that Abbott?
This is Heinsberg.
That's Heinsberg, right. Okay, so that is Heinsberg, that, there, there is a farm, up right on this, on the, on the north side, I can't remember the name of it.
There was a small CSA that Scott started out there that was not like, and I don't believe it's still going.
You're saying on the north side of Heinsberg? Yeah, like right there at Abbott Road, I mean, like, those are farms, and I guess there's a part of me that wants to protect, like, those not getting turned into subdivisions. That's a concern, like.
Are you sure that's not Vermont Land Trust?
That, that. That may be conservation.
Abbott, Abbott Road Gateway Farm to the right was part of the roads farm, and Vermont Land Trust did that whole.
Is that where, is Round Mountain right over there?
There might be.
It's further on.
Right up there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, maybe it's all in conservation easement.
I know that not all of it is. I didn't think it was Vermont Land Trust. What another thing?
I just think that that's a, like, distinctly, at like, at least coming up that place, that way, when you go up Greenleaf, right, I mean, it's.
Yeah, the only thing that I could say in defense of the change is that it is straddled by subdivisions on either side. So where? Well, the Kansas-shaped one.
There's Carriage Hill, and so there's.
So you get sort of, you, it's possible that you get this, there's 2 kind of cul-de-sac-y subdivisions.
Yep.
So A is?
These 2, there's, there's a possibility that you could kind of link these through to some extent.
I guess there's a, maybe I want to suggest, do you see where it, I don't know what state that is, but like, where that, the jag is, where there's that very narrow thing? What about cutting it off there, so like, the one closer, should I come over there?
More like they recommend on this map.
Is that the parcel boundary, what you have highlighted?
Yeah, this is parcel A. This area, this area seems distinctly rural agricultural here.
And this area, that's.
And this area, this part of 9, that's more in this, it does seem like a different.
Yeah, because the upper portion is the Kansas part.
This, exactly. I think it's in Mexico.
We're not in Kansas anymore.
Colorado.
Right, but is that what's that?
Sue, can you pull up agriculture soils on that?
There is, like, you know, a farm stand here, there's a farm right here, there's a farm right here, and some of that's conservation land, but this, and this is, this is, maybe it's all protected, but this is trails, this is all trails in it, right, and that, this is, like, I feel like this part should stay rural. The other part, you know, whenever we make it. So I just want to point out that Eric thought that this one was conserved, it, the development rights have been sold on this, so it's probably Vermont Land Trust. This is just current use, this personal baby is just in current use, so. So that kind of takes this one out, if the development rights have been sold.
And it actually prevents what we were thinking, which is that you could connect those 2 cul-de-sac-y subdivisions.
All right, well, so then that one could stay ra, it would be completely logical to stay rural because of the development rights. And then the parcel to the right?
Yeah, I think these just have been divvied up strange.
I know, now I'm wondering why they marked it that way.
Are we doing like Kansas only?
Well, what Sue has is the actual parcel boundaries.
Yeah.
And, and what we've been consistently trying to do is make decisions based on parcel boundaries, and so what they did here is not the parcel boundaries, they chopped through 2.
They lowered, they lowered one of the cardinal rules that we laid down at the beginning, which was we would snap.
You don't have agriculture soils. Okay, well, if that's got conservation, a conservation easement anyway, then it makes sense for that to stay in rural, and then the opportunity would then be in that other parcel for possible development, and then the question is, is it developed rural, is it developed rural residential? Right?
The, I, I know we can't split the parcel, but I mean.
We could.
It's just.
That's one of the rules we was trying to stick to.
We're trying to avoid doing it as much as possible, we have split a few, it's not like it's done.
I, I just want to, like, one, I mean, I, as, you know, just, like, one of our treasures that we have here in Brattleboro is the opportunity to, like, you know, we get on our bike from town and ride out towards Lilac Ridge on our bikes and get our fresh milk, and within, you know, once you're getting up Greenleaf, you're in, like, you're, I mean, that's a, that's a recreational, like, I don't know, it just seems like a real value that we have. If you put a subdivision there, whether it was a 1 acre mini mansion subdivision, or a, you know, regular kind of stuff, like, it just, I feel like it really changes the character of that, that part of, of our community. So the northern part that's close to 9, I think is fine to develop, but the southern part, I feel really hesitant to change the zoning of that from rural.
I'm leaning towards leaving it rural. I don't want to divide the lot, because I think that would get strange.
Okay, so let's poll the group. Who wants to keep it as is?
Wait, wait, keep it being both parcels or one parcel?
Well, one parcel's already restricted, so it doesn't make any sense to even consider it.
Okay, so we're talking about the eastern parcel.
So we're talking about the eastern parcel.
I want to consider, I want to throw out the possibility of, I know, splitting that lot, because I feel like there is, it makes sense for there to be able to be development on the Route 9 side of that.
But can they? Because they would need a right of way through that property on 9, if they're not coming from Greenleaf Street, right? And the whole point is the access to these parcels are from Greenleaf Street.
You could put a driveway, I mean, where they cut a road.
You could.
Eric might know this, if you, there, there has been exploration in the past of, I'm trying to figure out where New England House is, as you drive or walk along Route 9 going west.
Yeah, right before New England House, there's a road that goes in.
And so this, so, actually.
Ah, sorry, I need to do that.
That's okay. Do you, can you put the topo layer up?
Yeah.
It's all right.
Because it's almost across from.
Let me get in.
Come up here for a second.
Let's see, where's the, the cross, okay.
So there's the road.
Right.
Yeah, there you go, okay.
Oh, okay.
It's across from Leader Home Centers.
Right.
Yeah.
Let's see, that'd be New England House, right here.
Are these all the permits? Can you drop that off?
I think we have a right of way thing on here, too.
Yeah.
It looks like there's a road there anyhow.
Kill, kill the permits and the violation notices, which is clearly on the top, and then pick up the right of way, that'd be great. Yeah.
I love maps.
You guys can all access this online, it's maps online.
I've poked at it, it's fine.
We don't need address numbers, well, maybe we do.
My daughter likes maps.
All right.
Oh, it's up, so this is the one that shows the right of way?
Yeah, yeah, all right.
You're not going to get it for that phase.
Yeah, so I think it is, you could get it.
Okay, well then.
So I think that, if you see the contour lines here, there's sort of a ridge running this way. So, and you can see how the development here straddles a couple of contour lines, but it's basically situated, you know, it straddles some. I think the idea here would be that you would somehow have a kind of a ribbon style development, where you would be effectively thinking about almost linking this with this through here, right? And so, I guess, I guess from an administrative and also from a development standpoint, we could, we could leave both these parcels as rural and make the argument that we're going to leave them rural, and then signify subsequently to the, subsequent to this process of the new land use regulations, that we think that this is viable for some form of development. I think we already do talk about trying to join what we refer to as lollipop developments.
We did in the town plan.
We did in the town plan. So if somebody was to come forward and say, I want to spend serious money getting access up here and carving out some sites, but to do that, I need to change it from rural to rural residential or something, I don't think we would have opposition to making a zoning change, but it would work with some kind of a new parcel boundary, because I don't think they're going to want to have, I don't think it makes sense to do this part, or even if they did, they could maintain this as open space connected to the development, right? So there's. So there's, in other words, there's ways of actually thinking about this that doesn't require us to make a decision today as to whether we split this parcel, rural residential on one side and rural on the other or something like that. We could just leave it as rural and then let the developer figure it out if there's ever any impetus to do that. We have enough policy guidance in the town plan that would allow them to latch on to that strategy.
So, the southern parcel, the piece of the parcel is open space, they could get credit, like a density credit.
They're going to get density credit for through here. Now, the challenge, I keep on pointing here, but what I should really be doing is pointing here. This, because the development rights have been sold, it's never going to happen unless there's a really big winding back of that.
Is it the whole parcel of that? I don't, I don't know.
Right. I doubt that they pieced it out.
Yeah, I doubt it, too.
Now, there's been some legal, there's been some case law recently about how you actually, if it really is in perpetuity or whether you can get out of it, right? Selling in development rights. And that, so I guess, you know...
That's creepy.
So anyway, this area through here, I think it's plausible that you could imagine that this is developed and accessed some way if there was demand or impetus for it.
Ron, it's 10:35 and we've only done one.
Yeah.
So, I'm convinced, let's leave it all rural, or...
All right.
Rural.
Does anyone think differently?
That's a good point, thank you.
Deal with it later.
We'll fix it in post. Okay, rural, moving on. Sorry to reject your recommendation. Oh, glorious stock. Brookside, what's that? Four, I can't even find it.
So, Brookside, you might be familiar with the... There is, so this is Little Memorial Park, and off of Western Avenue, there's some condos here that are called Brookside. And the area that they're suggesting is kind of this parcel back in here. A couple of years ago, there was a planned residential, kind of a concept plan for a planned residential development there, with the idea that having some sort of plan would help market the sale of the property. It is, there are some constraints here, it's pretty steep, it'll be expensive. It presents some challenges to the town from a stormwater perspective. At least, the development that had been proposed was like, wow, to maintain the stormwater on this would be, would be tough. We think that there's too many constraints, that we're not, we would prefer that it not be densely developed. And that if you wanted to increase the density, you know, do a conservation subdivision.
Okay.
So, you're recommending that it remain rural?
It remains rural residential.
I'm good with that.
Anyone not good with that? Okay, moving right on.
So, Orchard Street, this is, this is Orchard Street. And the properties, I think, under consideration, it's in here, so you could access it, you know, maybe off of New England Drive, in here, or some of them, I think it comes up to here, so off of Orchard Street. This is steep as well, there, you know, would be the possibility of extending water and sewer, that's not so much the problem. Just kind of, you know, the density for a residential neighborhood is just really, it's pretty dense. And so, given the constraints of this property and kind of what we've seen from the build-out...
It seems tailor-made for a conservation PUD.
If it was going to hap, if anything was going to happen there, yes. And I think that if it was going to be a conventional subdivision with the density that would go with that, the number of vehicle trips per day would really challenge the Orchard Street, Route 9 intersection.
Which is already challenged.
Which is already pretty challenged. And there's no really viable way of gaining another accessway onto Route 9.
Right.
So, there is, there is basically a bottleneck.
Let's leave it.
Okay, does anyone have a problem with that?
I'm officially abstaining because I live on Orchard Street, so you won't make a...
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Okay.
That made a lot to me.
Mather property is... Over here, Mather Road. So this is the village all in here, this is the village district, this is all residential in here. These are the, he's talking about in here, on the map. In our current zoning, it is zoned residential neighborhood. It's not one that has existing water sewer right to it, but it's, you know, it's on the edge. It would be easy to extend, and so we thought that this was, you know, if we're looking for some area for residential neighborhood growth, this is a good place, it's adjacent to existing residential neighborhoods, which we talked about in the town plan, it's very close to the village. So we would recommend that that go.
It's kind of tucked in and somewhat surrounded by lowish-density suburban-style development already.
Okay.
Let's scroll the brand list.
I knew there was one I was missing, and that's the one I'm missing.
The Mayfair?
Oh, I couldn't open the shape files because I ran out of time, and I had given it to Brian.
So we're leaving that residential, I believe?
Well, thank you, residential, it's rural residential.
All right.
Guilford, Guilford Street? So this is our...
Did you want to share my data?
Yep. Okay. So this is, this is Guilford Street, so we have this zoned residential, this...
Where are we?
That's the, yeah, that's the recommended change.
Is that Summit, is that the... This is Summit Circle here, so this is the Montessori school, whatever it's failed development is from.
Hillings.
Hill.
No, not Hillings, sorry.
High Point.
High Point.
Yeah. And so the suggestion, I think, from the working group was to take residential neighborhood further down. Taking, I think it's to right before the bend, like, so in here.
That's wet on the right side of the road and on the left side slopes.
The right side is pretty, is constrained and it gets steep.
Yeah.
You know...
Lot of water up there, too, if you want to.
What would be the reasoning for that? Expanded residential.
So this, so this draft file is the revised one.
Oh, this is the revised, so you did change it.
So this is already an increase over the map that's...
That I'm looking at?
That you're looking at.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And it comes a little further south, but it's not going to be as far south as the working group recommended, because where that boundary cuts off, there is a lot, that's where the wetland starts.
Okay, so we agreed on July 6th to look into extending the RN a bit, but want to maintain a clear break to the countryside.
Okay.
That's my recommended break location.
It is previously gone to here.
Yep.
And so...
That seems fine.
That's a nice compromise. Anyone not agree?
I like the map.
Okay.
Thanks, Brandy.
He must have put up...
He must have put it up. They were doing some analysis, which is why I needed it.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, so are we recording the changes that were suggested that we've accepted?
Yes.
Yep.
Big red pen.
Yeah.
Well, I just think that will be useful, you know, we, we agree to seventy bucks, send them your recommendations or whatever.
Right. Not that high.
Whitestone Village is this development here, which is off of William Street. It kind of comes up steeply, it is a residential neighborhood. We put it in the waterfront district, I think initially it was probably because...
Is it in the floodwater?
No.
It pops up really high, it's just a little knob.
Yeah. So, you know, our recommendation is to put it in residential, it is residential, it's up, it's... Any other uses in the waterfront district would be problematic.
And it's right, a budding, that's residential neighborhood right there? Okay.
Okay. The plateau up on West River Sioux, the split between, you okay?
Yeah.
Is that the place we had talked about solar?
Yeah.
Yes.
Didn't they get their permit?
They did.
Yeah, that's why I remember that, so...
Sorry, it's just one of these...
Yeah, which makes the whole thing so academic that it's not even funny.
Do you want to start talking about it?
Rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic?
Rearranging it, solid panels. So, it's, this, if you were heading north on 91 and you could see it, because, you know, the road construction wasn't happening, you see, you know, sort of three terraces, the one sort of immediately, the banks of the river, which is where the railroad tracks are, then it lifts up beyond that purple line there, which is the railroad tracks, and that's substantially higher. And then it grows up immediately again, and then there's the, that pinkish-orange color, the industrial, and that's where New Chapter is currently located. In earlier versions, in the town planning process, we had identified this as a scenic, you know, as a scenic asset, because you've got overview of the West River as it meets the Connecticut, and...
It's the first thing people see coming up north on that bridge.
Right, and that it was suitable therefore for kind of a large, we envisioned something like a large-scale residential development that would happen all at once, like a age-specific community or assisted-living facility or something like that, condos.
It just seems to me that the development group didn't get the point about the waterfront district being a scenic.
No, they see it as, if you can't, if you can't access the waterfront from the lot, they don't see it as having any waterfront value. Right?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Despite the fact that, yeah, it'll be surrounded by solid panels.
Getting into more autumnal colors.
Perpetually, it's all actual.
Right.
Okay, so...
Maybe the solid panels will then go on a beautiful, you know, assisted-living facility.
That is the cut I made, and that breaks the property line there on the right-hand side. Because that property line extends all the way down to the interstate.
So this kind of orangey-yellow, where it's a sunflower color here. This has previously been in the rural residential, and the comment we received is, actually, these are part of the SIT, we're learning campus. And so, we looked at it and said, yeah, for the most part, everywhere else, we've put the entire campus setting parcels in the institutional zoning district. The reason we were hesitant here is because it kind of drops down to the interstate. So, Brandy has recommended, it does cut a parcel, but it does follow some parcel lines, but it gets into, you know, it takes care of their campus, the developed part.
The buildings are all in there, so that line now cuts part of that pond and essentially right along the end of the tree line. So, that's...
But then it drops down.
Okay.
Right.
Why, why, I didn't understand, why cut it?
Because if you didn't cut it, then you would have the institutional PUD go all the way to, see, all the way to the interstate.
And we think rural residential would be more protective due to lot size and the types of uses, if any sort of development was...
Ever moved, ever proposed.
So, is the PUD covered the entire parcel?
My understanding is that although they own this property, it is outside the PUD.
All right, well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
We never, we never finally resolved that.
My understanding is that the PUD is the original parcel, and these were purchased subsequently in the last 10 years, and they are outside the PUD.
Okay. Okay. What scheme?
We can start talking about this. So, currently it's zoned rural residential, but it's subject to a PUD and Act 250. And the comment coming back from the working group, the informal working group, was to convert it to, make it an institutional PUD.
So the property was split, there's kind of, we had cut off the institutional zoning district to be kind of here, but the PUD, the entire PUD is this yellowish area.
Okay.
And so, kind of consistent with what we've done for the retreat and those kind of properties, we figured we'd put... I mean, we just looked at one where we cut it off, but there was kind of a compelling, more compelling reason to us. We thought we should just keep it all in the institution.
Okay.
Okay.
Which, again, in a weird kind of way, could be moved because of the future of the institution and the lands that they own, or don't. All right, industrial lands.
I'd also confirm that that's what you want from that. Yeah, I wasn't 100% sure that that was, we try to do these map changes by phone call, always a fun experience.
So...
It's a craft game.
In here, this parcel...
It's a really fun game to play.
This parcel in here, which is green, and this one up here had previously been in the industrial zoning district that the working group reviewed. And they kind of felt the constraints on this property, and there's, there's like two homes, that's it, that it would be better left in rural residential, which is what it's zoned now. We took a look at the constraints and said, it's pretty constrained, it's not going to be developed as industrial.
Where is this, which number is this?
I'm sorry, this is, this is Route 5.
Seventeen, yeah.
Yeah, seventeen.
This is Route 5 going out to Guilford, Algeria Snowy.
And the, I mean, so to sort of interpret the coloring here, so the purple is industrial here and green is rural residential. And you see by leaving these rural residential, it just touches that little patch of rural residentialist that leaves, if you like, the Route 5 corridor pretty green and the way it is right now.
And while this is industrial over here, that, this is really steep, too.
Yeah, that's not going to change.
Okay. So you're good with the change?
Sure.
Yes.
Can you just explain including the parcel in common ownership along Route 5?
So, this, you can't, this here is a separate property, but it's owned by the same people that own this property. So, well, the working group only recommended this first one.
We would throw in a second one.
Okay, thanks.
Service center.
Oh, this is...
So, this is the extending, extension of the neighborhood center all the way to Exit 1, so it's...
What were we doing before?
We were...
We had service center, if you look at...
We had a tiny little service center area right up against the Exit 1 ramp.
It's like one or two lots.
Which went to the neighborhood center and then...
We had service center here.
Right.
So it took into account the ambulance, rescue, and I think it took into account the motel.
Yeah, it did.
It was the Econo Lodge and...
Rescue.
Rescuing on the left-hand side as you're heading into town, and the factory outlet store, and the urban gas station, and the Burger King on the other side.
Is there a disbarriage to change into neighborhood center? So are any, would those uses be permitted? Uses are very similar, the scale is more in keeping with what's on Canal Street. So, so you can still have gas stations, you can still have it in your hotel, motel, you can still have the safety services.
And their point was what, so that the gas stations wouldn't be unperforming use?
No, their point was, they say, this area gateway has the potential for pedestrian form, which is better represented in neighborhood center. If gas stations are appropriate, try making them conditional and direct the form to support a pedestrian public realm. Seems fine to me.
We still have this little area of mixed use here, but...
Did we decide, I didn't know if you, is that when we wanted to go?
I was okay just putting neighborhood center all the way through, but if...
Yeah, I wanted that, too.
Yeah, well, it seems more consistent.
I think we looked at the parcels, like, this is a large parcel. You know, we think with the buffering requirements and the kind of the landscaping and the...
That lady's been sucking up Burger King grease for, since they built the driven place. I used to work on the place, I always felt sorry for that, the Burger King up next door.
So is that, is that where the Planned Parenthood is and the...
Generous Street, June Generous, and then there's one... Uh, no. Generous Street, June Generous, and then there's one residential house on the other side.
Right.
So there's.
And it's a funny bump. This is sort of like rock-out crop.
Yeah.
Right. It makes that side just ridiculously underdeveloped.
What about this house here? I'm not sure. I think, oh, I think we're going to do it.
It's a work in progress.
To keep it.
Yes. To keep it from falling down.
Yeah, I'm remembering our conversation now. We were, I was going to look in detail at those and see whether we were going to go two lots. We thought maybe on Fairground we might want to go three, that there's actually something that comes right up against the road. It's pretty much all locked, all paved over already there.
Yeah, as an owned restaurant.
Yeah.
Which is no longer functioning.
So I was going to look at those in more detail and figure out where the best place to put the line was.
Okay. But I, I think the argument for mixed use in there is pretty weak.
Yeah. So we'll just take this neighborhood center. And is, what is, what is that, right? Is that a little neighborhood, right, between the high school and that area?
Yeah.
Catwood?
In there? Yeah, it's just a residential house.
Yeah, there's residential houses further out on Generous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
And the last one was this. They had looked at this prior to us making some changes. They were suggesting extending, you have to look at this map, but extending the urban center down Depot Street, further down Vernon Street, and then actually parts of, they were kind of splitting parcels that front on South Main Street for the urban center. So we had already changed Depot Street to go into the waterfront district. We had already extended the urban center down to the edge of the, um, college parking lot. And we felt strongly that Route 142 should be the break, that urban centers should not hit the backs of the South Main. It's just very different. It's residential scale. If all of a sudden you're allowing six-story buildings.
What is Marrow College in?
Why, why the ridge thing?
No, no, I agree. Never mind, go on.
Urban Center.
Normal colleges and urban, we're proposing that it be an urban, but is it right today, or?
No, I just, I can't tell very well. That's, it's above your mouse cursor.
This is Marrow College, and this is the parking lot.
And what's the thing below your mouse cursor?
That's the Blue Seal Building, and this is actually where the bridge.
The bridge, yeah.
A little bridge drawn on that.
Is that, and then?
Waterfront.
Yeah, that's right.
Just a little bridge.
Okay.
We're done with that one?
Small matters.
I know that some of you have taken off from work or are, need to get back to work. So what's everybody's time?
I got the whole day off.
Oh, wow!
I put, I put 2:12 on the calendar.
That's what I did.
Okay. How about you, James?
Thank you. I'll hang for a little more.
All right, so we up to the multicolored Brandy document now?
Yeah, which is.
Which is consistent and clearer.
You can put an art history major in Chinese college. That's just the way.
Art history majors need employment, so. Very notable proposition.
Okay. Do we have control over the temperature in this room, or is that a whole building thing?
Or do we have to discuss it with a committee?
Do you want me to go get a blanket, please? Or a blanket? I've got both in my office.
We can.
I do. I wouldn't mind it, please. Does anybody else need a blanket? It's only 95 degrees outside.
Are you, so, I could try and get it adjusted, but it's hard.
Oh, I just didn't know if there was a thermostat in this room.
No, it doesn't work. It works with a computer that links to.
No worries. Please.
Hunwell job.
We've computerized thermostat, since we did.
It's all, it's all of a mess.
Yes, but they're broken.
They don't work very well. That's what put the Austin School out of business, too.
I have a general question that came up for me about this, which is, there were some particular things that were adding layers of challenge for, those plans required a major site.
Yeah.
Like, now you have to go get a professional landscape architect. Now you have, you know, like different layers of extra things to do. Can you clarify the circumstances that require a major as opposed to a minor? Because.
Yes.
Yes. That's one of the things that the, where we set the line is under discussion through here, to some extent.
It is.
Yeah.
And I don't know that I have the right paperwork in front of me, but.
My, my small business owner, like, hat was kind of like, uh-oh.
So, in the draft that you all have, there is not a distinction between major and minor subdivisions. So one of the, or major or minor site plan. So one of my recommendations has been to put one in, which we can then clarify some of these standards as applying to the major site plan approval. And you haven't seen the language yet, but it's going to be something along the lines of, if you were doing a new, a conditional use, that would be a major site plan. Or a new principal building, those would be a major site plan. And a new, or a substantial renovation to an existing building, which is a really, you know, major renovation of the building, not just a minor adjustment.
And you would define what that means?
Yes, I do have a condition.
That's like you're taking walls out, or you're.
Yeah, you're taking out walls, you're redoing the facility, you know, the heating, you know, all of the plumbing. You're doing the electric. You're really putting a major investment to the building. So that would be one of the triggers for a major site plan review. And then the other recommendation is some sort of increase, and this is, we're still working on the number, of parking spaces or impermeable surface coverage. I think, so the thing I sent you was a 10 or 20?
10 parking spaces or 2,000 square feet.
Square feet of impermeable surface. So, those would be the trigger points at which your site plan approval would go to the major site plan review. And the minor ones would be done administratively.
And are those, is that distinction for all zoning districts, or some?
It would be for everything that had to have site plan review.
You said any renovation, though, was the first part?
So, a ma, a major renovation. Let me, I, I can find you the definition of renovation.
So.
Like adding a wall? Is that a?
No, nothing in general.
Okay, so, so changing the footprint, yes, okay.
Change the footprint. Well.
Now, one of the definitions that I saw when I was looking at this, is that, this just came up for me as, you know, I was just thinking about, you know, like a project that I did as a small business owner, where I had to get, you know, it was a conditional use change. But had I been like, oh my God, I have to spend an extra $5,000 on a professional landscape architect? And like, there are all these extra expenses that are going in for small business owners. And sometimes the changes, you know, might require conditional use, or it might, there might be small things, but it's not like a major developer. It, you know, you could have a small thing that could still trigger a major site, a major site plan. Like, you know, doing something that, you know, comes back, and you're like, well, it's going to affect the traffic flow, or whatever. I mean, I guess I just want to stay manageable for, for small business owners who are wanting to make changes, and not start adding in too many extra layers of. I mean, it's one thing to require a lighting, you know, plan, but, or a landscape plan, but to start saying this has to be done by a professional engineer, or this has to be done by, you know, I just want to be realistic about how many barriers we're going to be putting up for people who are small business owners, not, you know, being developers trying to make changes. Because a lot of things require, at least according to existing things and kind of what you're saying, you know, that would trigger what sounds in here like a whole lot of new expenses for people who want to do any, any small development that would trigger that.
So this minor-major split should help address your concern. I mean, we may want to discuss where you think the bar should be set, but making that distinction should help, because as it's written now, the standards that are in here apply to all site plan review. And so that could be very small changes. And we were having some issues, we're sort of trying to figure out administratively, at what point are some of those things going to come into play? And that's what some of these comments from the working groups are about, is what's applied. So I think this makes it a lot clearer.
Okay.
And I did come up here, this is a definition that we use for major renovation. Extensive alteration work, in addition to work on the exterior shell of the building, primary structural components, mechanic, mechanical, electric, and plumbing systems, and all the side work. Typically, the extent and nature of the work is such that the building cannot be used for its intended purpose while the work is in progress.
So if somebody had, had a lot of knob-and-tube wiring, and they went to yank it out and replace it with regular electrical, would that trigger it?
No, I don't think in and of just.
Not in and of itself, okay.
I mean, that could be part of a component of it, but.
But re-siding.
That would not, I don't think cover re-siding.
You don't touch it?
No, I don't think that would be extensive alteration to the exterior shell. I think that's just.
We're putting on a porch?
Plus? Like, plus would be one of those things? I mean, like, because of the way it's written, it does kind of sound like if you were redoing your electrical.
Maybe a little ambiguous.
Yeah.
Well, we can work on the definition, but.
Well, I, I guess maybe what, what I would perhaps suggest considering is not just working on having, on the definition of what requires which application, but figuring out how to be, have, like, reduce the burden while still meeting the need. Like, to be able to say, you need to have a lighting plan, and it has to be a, you know, professional quality. Like, you know, but like, you know, or something, like that, 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 I think that having, it, I don't know, it does seem ambiguous. Maybe there's a way we can make it less ambiguous and keep it like that.
If the intent is, if the intent is a major, major review is required for your significantly altering the building, say, you know, the building's use or the footprint of the building, and, you know, these other things are applying, maybe that just a wording change can make that less ambiguous.
The piece that I'm concerned about is when somebody is going to do a, like, make a change to, to their building, and there is, you know, there's already, like, you know, obviously great investments and expense and risk as a business owner of doing something. To, to create a situation where then somebody has to go out and hire a professional engineer, a professional traffic engineer, and a professional landscape designer, and a professional lighting engineer in order to satisfy their requirements, it just seems really excessive to me. You know, and I, I don't know what, I mean, there are certain situations where you do need that. Like, if there's going to be, you know, you know, you're going to have a, you know, maybe you need a traffic engineer. If there's going to be, like, you're creating a new change off of a major road, or something like that. But I guess I'm concerned that it's going to trigger, in, in, in a lot of situations, it would affect people who are simply trying to, you know, expand a small business. And, and to create a burden like that is going to prevent, yeah, I don't know, it's that balance, you know.
Can some of this, I mean, so triggering a site plan review, I'm assuming means that someone is sitting with you and reviewing your site plan. And I would assume at that point, you might say, okay, well, this is, doesn't seem like it would have any impact on traffic, so that wouldn't be required, but you, you need to look at landscaping. I mean, is there a way to, like, actually do it, like, a customized?
No.
Okay.
So, the purpose of site plan review and the standards that's obtained to it are levels of review that would go through the development review board. So if we were to introduce minor and major site plan, then there would be different standards that would apply to each of those things. But typically, a change of use, or a significant change in the footprint for something that Rachel's outlining would require site plan review currently. And so what we're introducing is a set of standards about landscaping, lighting, parking, stormwater treatment, that are all details that would be illustrated via a site plan. The question of whether those things would require professional use or not is a good one, and where is at the bar is a good question. I think what we might be attempting to do here is address the question of small businesses in a, in a service center district like Putney Road versus small businesses on Western Avenue in a predominantly residential, with a neighborhood of predominantly residential character. And so, maybe we need to think a little bit more about where we set the bar. But I think that we're trying to actually obtain a significant improvement in the amenity and the impact of things like gas stations on Canal Street, or, you know, cell phone dealers on Putney Road, right? Who are also small businesses.
I guess the piece, I think that the idea of keeping a review of all of those factors is important. Keeping a review of the lighting impacts and the parking impacts, and all of those things, and the landscaping, and all of that. The piece that I'm concerned about is requiring that they be done by a licensed so-and-so, or a, you know, that, I mean, I can just speak from my, just personal experience. When I developed my center on Western Avenue, I had to do all these things. But I was able to do them mostly myself, and with some help, and create a lighting plan, and create a landscaping plan, and do all of that stuff to put it in the application. That was all manageable. Had I had to go through a professional architect, you know, a professional landscape architect, and a professional blah 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 with each of those things, I don't know that I could have done it, quite honestly. And, and that, so I'm just speaking from my own personal experience. So I don't, maybe there could be a thing of if the renovation is, you know, valued, or that changes are going to be cost more than $300,000, or more than, you know, pick some number, then you have to have it be done by a licensed lighting engineer and lighting designer, and, you know, to do that.
Well, in truth, most places are one-stop shops. So if you have an engineer, he'll do all that stuff for you. And it'll be one ticket. And it's not having to go through all these different things.
All right, so the question is, what triggers that?
Yeah, but I, it's, it's not as onerous as we're making it sound.
Okay, as I would imagine.
And you know what?
Okay, that's good to know.
They know things. And they have a particular professional expertise that would be helpful to you. Just like you or I, in our profession, we know things.
So it might be, it might be the sort of thing too, then, because like, honest, I didn't even know that. Because, you know, I'm, I'm not in that field, you know? So not even being aware of that, if, if there are those kinds of things, having resources of some sort to, to like, say like, okay, this is what's going to be required of you, and you're, like, I don't know, it just, the whole thing becomes, it, it becomes an overwhelming process for, you know, I would imagine for many people. So I guess the question then is, where does that get triggered? I think that it's important to have the reviews. I think it's just important also not to be too onerous to small business people who are just, you know, trying to help support our local community.
Yeah, and I think that this major-minor split will, we'll clarify that a lot.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we definitely need to have discussion around where that break is. But I, I really think that that approach is going to go a long way towards making this work better, because as that is set up, the minor things would no longer go to the DRB, and then all of those more detailed standards that you're referring to would apply to them. They apply to major. So I think a lot of things, a lot of these small business things would go.
What I'm saying though is, my project would have been a considerable major.
It might have been. I don't know what it was, so.
Well, it was.
It was a change in use, which is a conditional, yeah.
I know. So, I mean, I, I just, I guess I just, from personal experience, you know, have a lot of concern and caution about how we potentially deter and overwhelm small business owners so that they don't actually.
But some of it, like, you know, I mean, we don't have requirements that I can recall of, but you can speak to it probably better, Brandy.
Great, I'm ready. We don't say you have to get a professional to do it all the time.
That's some of the changes that are in here in response. So that's some of the things we have to look through, and some of that we're working on.
I mean, the working team suggested that you hire a professional.
Yes.
Okay.
Oddly enough, design professionals found many instances where hiring a design professional would be.
Yeah, I'm sorry if that was clear. That was the biggest concern around this. So that is my concern. Having to hire the professional.
I'm going to throw my two cents in on hiring a professional. Up at Austin School, there's two, two circles in front of buildings that were designed by a professional, and you can't plow them.
Right.
So, a professional, I'm very.
Yeah, that's my only concern. I don't mind the standards being there. I don't mind the major-minor. I don't mind all the requirements. I just think that having to go through, like, official licensed professionals for each of these things, even if it's.
If someone wants, if someone doesn't want to hire a professional and do it themselves, and then you look at it and you go, well, this isn't very good, and it goes back to.
Because that was my point. I mean, I think that some people are really, you know, some people are dealing with a site that is in good condition. It's got good landscaping, the parking, you know, all that's fine. Other people don't have sites like that, and maybe don't have the skills to do it. And, you know, they might set something in, and maybe the DRB looks at it and says, we think you need to, you know.
You need some sizing on it.
I mean, I would say it's not my, I wouldn't favor pushing things off, you know, requiring it in the language.
Okay, so because that affected a number of things in here, I wanted to just say that after that, that that's a concern of mine about this.
Okay.
Sorry, that takes a little.
Noted.
Okay, so, how do we want to start this? We want to just start at the top?
Well, it's a lot of.
It's a lot.
Can I ask, if we could just make a process suggestion here? I don't know if other people. Can I ask, just make a process suggestion here, I don't know if other people did, but I went through each of these and made notes on the ones that I had concerns about, and other ones I'm, like, good with, so if we wanted, if other people also did that, and we could just go through, and be like, does anyone have an issue with...
Yeah, that was more what I was gonna propose, so we just, we'll go through it really quickly, if people have got a comment or a question about it, but if there's consensus around the table with the staff response, then we won't talk about it, okay, so...
Anyone have any comments on page one?
I do, and number nine, the only thing is, I'm picturing kids doing fundraising car washes, is that gonna affect this at all?
They're exempt.
They're exempt.
Perfect.
Children are always exempt.
Although high school girls washing cars in bikinis are always exempt.
Assortment shit.
This happens in my town a lot.
Yeah, all the time, I know, it's a good point, okay, and see how it works out with the fire department, okay?
All right, we're good?
We're good.
Page two.
Page two?
I'm getting page two.
Three?
I have a question on number 21.
Yep.
Why not, why wouldn't we include the word or health?
It's kind of understood, isn't it, that all zoning relates to the public health and safety?
Twenty and 21 are comments that go together, and when taken together weaken the statement that's in there.
Right.
It's an odd reworking of the language, and so, it takes the concept that we've gotten, that we're working on, it takes health and safety essentially out of the first one, and puts it in the second one, but not at the same...
But not at the same point.
Not at the same point, so it's a weird, pretty shuffle, yes, so twenty, two statements go together, and I...
And we've been trying desperately to say must instead of should, for several years now.
Yeah, I wasn't concerned about the must-should part, it was more about just the, why not add the word or health, so that helps me understand the things.
I was not sure about 19, I just wrote, I'm not sure I agree.
Number 19?
Number 19.
Yeah, with the recommendation policy change on number 19.
So we have two, I think, permitted, we have two quarries in town, that, right now, current zoning, it's a five-year renewal, we checked in with the state about, because Act 250 permits for this type of activity need to be renewed as well, but they don't have a set renewal period, it's not five, it's not 10, it's kind of whatever is proposed and doesn't seem reasonable, given...
It's the rate of extraction that triggers, which triggers the review, so we're kind of in this weird space.
Yeah, so we felt like there's such low level of it occurring in Brattleboro, and that any change in level would necessitate an Act 250 permit, that, you know, we just kind of felt like, then we would know something's going on, and...
Right, and to be clear about it, when there's an Act 250 permit review, when there's an amendment to an Act 250 permit, which would happen, so, say you sat on a quarry or a gravel pit for five years, and then you got a contract, and you ramped up the amount of material that you're extracting, you'd have to go back to Act 250 and get an amendment to your permit, because it would affect the volume that you're extracting, we are a party to the Act 250 permit process, so we will be notified, so this, this weird way in which, we don't have a strong role in the permitting in the first place, and the pace at which things are reviewed and set out is not something that we can control.
So it seems like what you're suggesting is that the five-year versus the 10-year is, maybe not moot, but it's unlikely to be triggered by the time expiring, it's more likely to be triggered by a change.
Yeah, and there's very little change, and there's very low levels of activity, so 10, when we talked to Act 250, they were like, 10's, 10's pretty common, there's not a whole lot going on, so we wouldn't typically do it on a five-year.
And if someone came in with this, like, with a proposed language, if an applicant came in for a more intensive operation, this language is written so that the DRB could reduce that 10-year period if they wanted a more frequent check-in, but it takes the base level.
Yes, so, when I spoke to the woman at Act 250, she's like, you know, truck traffic, that's gonna, any increase in truck traffic or extraction timing would trigger Act 250, I think wetlands could change within, you know, the permitting time, but again, are such low level here, that we didn't think that was a huge risk, so...
Right.
All right, I'm satisfied.
And is this only for, like, is this applied to water extraction?
No.
Okay.
This is completely different.
A thought, so...
All right, so, anybody else on page three, four, five, six, seven?
Okay, okay, just hold on a minute.
Too fast, too fast.
All right, 35 to 44.
Kind of losing page.
Okay, you wanna go back to 35? Okay, 35 through 44.
Nope.
Okay, 45 through 50, 51 through 57, okay, 52.
Like this landscape.
Oh, we like these the best.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, my one statement that I will make about the landscape architecture piece, is that if you don't specify otherwise, in most cases, your landscaping design will be done by the site engineer, and it will not be printed.
Okay.
And so, to be really specific about it, even though it's under the old ordinance, we have received an application for a massive storage unit facility on Putney Road in the commercial district, which will be before the DRB very soon, and what's pivotal there, and what's key to us, is the landscaping and lighting plan, because that will be the way we will mitigate the visual impact, and so under those circumstances, even though this is a small business person, and it's their form of deriving income, we think the community interest is best served by them submitting a professional design, and so, how you argue between the social benefit and niceness and smartness of a dentist versus a person who's gonna make their income out of a storage unit thing, we don't necessarily wanna get into, so, both have impacts, both have needs, if they could both be located in, in a commercial district, they both have traffic, they both have these things happening.
Okay, so here's an idea, what about distinguishing by zone?
I think, I think the standards do break out by zone, and that's, that's part of it, so, so we already, we've already captured it that way, and I think that the requirements for a plan in mixed use are a lot less challenging to meet, and therefore cheaper than they would be.
It's the same requirements, though.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be a landscape architect requirement.
Or just a biocultural.
But the work, the work is not as complex, I mean, you know, coming up, coming up with a landscaping plan for a quarter acre lot with a house in the middle of it, that's gonna turn into a dentist's office, is an afternoon's work for a landscape architect, getting it right for the many, you know, for the, for the storage unit development that's gonna be five acres, with drainage and a whole bunch of other issues, now we've got something going on, right?
And I'll also point out that many nurseries have someone on staff who is a certified horticulturist, who meets this requirement as well.
Right.
So, most of the larger nurseries have someone who does that, who meets the standards.
I think it's important, I mean, that's a kind of a, the requirements for landscaping are a big feature in the change of the zoning, and they're important.
I'm wondering, is there a difference if it's a, if it's a, you know, redevelopment of an existing property, completely new, but I'm thinking of lots of examples where properties have been redeveloped and landscaped. It seems like there's a description of what, what the, what we're looking for, that we wanna get some materials, you know, like, that it's, you know, it's explained what is being sought, and then it has to go before the DRB, so I guess that's just my, I mean, you know, if everybody else thinks, go for it, then go for it, but I guess I just, I'm still wondering about the requiring the licensed landscape architectures or biocultures, and I also, I mean, I see the benefit of it, too, I also just am concerned about the...
But again, it's for major projects.
Right.
Right, but, but as we were talking about before, many, many minor projects would be considered major projects, you know, just because of the change of, you know, to simply...
Could, I mean, would it, would it help to, so you said the major-minor distinction would help clarify, should, should we be using time to talk about that distinction now?
We have a draft, we can talk about it on Monday night.
Okay.
Yeah. So we wanna, we wanna...
I mean, if everybody else is good with this, I'll step up, but...
So, I mean, one of the reasons I made this recommendation, based on the comments that the working group provided, is that they wanted to take the must language out of the more specific design components that we had in here, and so, and make them guidelines, and that's what this does, it does make them guidelines, but then, I think if you're doing that, then you need to have some level of a professional to go along with it to interpret what's involved, because they're no longer are, it's no longer a mandatory language that the DRB is going to be able to hold the applicant to, so you need to have...
Yeah, but, and Brenda, you were saying that the certified horticulturist is generally seen, a group that you buy the plants from.
Yeah, most large nurseries have a certified horticulturist.
So that makes it, if you're gonna buy the plants...
I also don't think that that actually protects us at all, though, I mean, as a town, because if somebody is saying, I'm the person who's paying, I'd like you to draw up a picture that does, that looks like this, you know, I just don't know that that actually, I don't know, like, the hope is you get a good landscape architect to do the drawing, right, as opposed to somebody who's, who's like, oh, okay, yeah, I'll sign my name off on, on this thing, I don't know, I...
I mean, I think the other component of this is that the, these landscape elements are now gonna be very much tied into your stormwater elements, and I think you, just, this language has really raised the bar on that, that whole package of...
The complexity of it.
Yeah, it really has, between the...
Is that necessary in residential and mixed-use neighborhoods? Pardon? Isn't necessary in residential and mixed-use?
It wouldn't apply to, you know, a single-family, this wouldn't apply to any single-family, two-family, it could apply to a multifamily.
If there's a conditional, it's like, how long?
It would not apply to single and two-family, it applies only to the conditional use, so if a business is located in those districts, it applies to the business, or multifamily residential, that applies to them.
That's what I'm talking about.
Because I hear what you're saying, what, what do you do with a site that has appropriate landscape, because, you know, we do have sites with nice landscaping, do we need to have, you know, is there an out that you've got a landscape site, it's kind of got the features that we're looking at, it kind of works with the neighborhood, is there, how do we, how do we not make a development like that go through a landscape architect that maybe will come in and add things when it's not really necessary?
Well, the language in here speaks to, you know, maintain, preserving, or install, so there's definitely a recognition that existing plant material counts towards the requirements, it's a requirement that you get a landscape architect.
Can I just suggest that we move this off to Monday night?
Yeah, everybody think about this, and we'll talk about it Monday night, when we're talking about the major and the minor.
Yeah, and I feel like, yeah, understanding the, how that is defined will make it easier to, like, probably talk about it.
Yeah, the major, I like to understand the major-minor better.
I think there's some technicalities with how things move through the DRB that are important, we can go back to it, so...
I've said one thing before we move on.
Sure.
Even if landscape architect is just essentially gussing up a drawing, if somebody makes professional sketches or plans, are a lot easier to digest when we're on the DRB, a lot of the time we'll get, you know, somebody who's essentially drawing two rectangles and circles that are gonna be trees and muskels, and, you know, sometimes you understand it, or sometimes the pictures of the property make it clear that it's okay, but sometimes everybody on the DRB is kind of like, what is this, what is it gonna look like, and the professionals, whether it's landscapers, or light plans, or sound plans, or stormwater plans, we get those frequently, and it's easy to read, and in the case of stormwater stuff, you have an engineer who is staking his license on saying that this is actually gonna take the stormwater off, and stuff like that, one is available.
Right, so I think, there's a, so there's a, there's a component of the review process, without wanting to stretch this out, between the difference between guidance language and, and requirements that are also really important, so if you go, if you loosen it up to guidance language, then you need to have a professional be able to say, this meets the guidelines, and if you insist on something, then it doesn't matter, you just, you don't need a professional, you just need, you just need the fact that it's accomplished, right?
That's maybe, maybe the place where I would lean a little bit more, to just say it's required, and people can do that, but, yeah, we can talk about that.
Right, all right, anything else on 51, 51 through 57, 58 through 62, 63 through 67, 68 through, oh, sorry, so we're...
Yeah, so, yeah, 62 is a similar, I mean, it's about the professional and licensed engineer, designer.
Yep, so that you know, and we can pick this up on Monday night, but typically, what happens is that when you, when you seek to obtain light fixtures for specific requirements, the main factor of the lights will generate a lighting plan, they have, they have software that just generates the, what we call a lighting plan, which will show what the lumin, you know, with the, if you, what the reach of the light is, and what the intensity of the light is, as part of the sale of the light fixtures, so it's, comes with it, and...
I'm just speaking from experience, having gone through all of this stuff a year ago with a property in Western Avenue.
Yep, that's okay, that's fine, 63 through 67. And 68 through 76, and I believe that's the end of it.
Well, we have to revise from what I saw.
That was all I meant, was that's the end of this, believe me, okay, so now we're on to section 333, stormwater management?
No, I'm still...
Yeah, sure.
I'm very poorly organized, my pronouns are a bit...
It's okay, you've got extenuating circumstances, all right.
Do you wanna talk to Brady?
Yeah.
So, I have gone back to the stormwater section, and essentially redrafted it, we have had the benefit of having someone who's a professional in this field, of water quality and water engineering type person, provide feedback, actually, on, because I guess I'm a pill, which uses similar models, so, taking some of her feedback, and bringing it back to this, and some of what the working group had to say, so this brings a slightly different approach to stormwater management aspects, so that we have here in 333B, setting up the different levels of developments, and things that get a state permit, they're still sort of sent off to the side, they meet your requirements because they meet state requirements, and then we have the smallest of sort of impact projects, the single and two-family home projects, and then we have sort of multifamily mixed-use, small non-residential projects, and then larger, multifamily mixed-use and non-residential projects, and it's also sort of the exemptions that we tried to craft last time, which we kind of struggled over, figuring out what to allow and what to exempt, we've got basically a standard in here that relates to an increase in the amount of impervious surface on the lot, so if you're increasing the impervious surface, if you're not gonna increase it by more than 1,000 square feet, or 10%, or 500 square feet, impervious is already more than 10% of the lot, then you don't have to do anything further with stormwater, so we've tried to clarify what is triggered and what is not that way, so that's what's different in B, than getting around to the C, the retrofit of sites, there's, one of the, the feedback I got from Amy to look at this was that we were being a bit too optimistic about the feasibility of introducing green-street stormwater infrastructure into some sites, particularly the retrofit sites, that oftentimes, there just isn't, isn't physically possible to make it happen. to make it happen, either due to what's already there, the soils, the compaction. There's just a lot of problems to overcome on these retrofit sites. And it can't, it isn't just, it's sometimes just impossible. So, if this provides this 20% amount of, if there's at least 20% pervious area as of the total amount of impervious, then you've got enough area to try to do something with, from a green stormwater infrastructure point of view. And if you don't, then you're really going to be looking at more structural means and can deal with stormwater that way. So that's what this retrofit piece is getting at. And then there's a new waiver piece that also gets back to that idea that recognizing that not all sites are capable of this, depending on slopes and soils. One of the things I hadn't really realized, from a technical point of view, is in this, this is a concern more out in the rural areas. You can't put these green stormwater infrastructure practices within the isolation distances of wells and subject systems. So, when you start looking at some sites, that can become a limitation. You may have a lot of green space, but it may be already dedicated to some other purpose. So, looking at, at those things. So this tries to set up a means by which applicants could come through the DRB and demonstrate that there are site conditions that prevent them from doing the green stormwater infrastructure approach, that they have minimized the footprint of that impervious surface to the maximum extent feasible. And they've done what they can with the resources that are available on the site to basically get water to infiltrate, rather than just pipe it off as quickly as possible. So that's what D is getting at. And then E and F are basically those two levels of standards for the two different levels of projects.
I've got just a quick question. On three-thirty-three E, A, impervious surface on the lot must not exceed 7,500 square feet. Okay, what's the standard of a lot? Is that a size?
No, the lot is the parcel that you, the total parcel area that you're working with.
Okay, because if you had a larger parcel, you could have a larger impervious area.
You might have a larger impervious area.
That's why, only question, that's, doesn't make sense.
So, you have, you have basically these three options within each of these. So you have to do one of them. You don't have to do, you know...
So if you didn't, yeah, so if you didn't go through that threshold, then you're, you're all set.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. So if you, if you have more than 7,500 square feet of impervious surface, you're not going to be able to meet option one. You can meet option two or three.
Okay.
But it says lots that meet all of the following criteria will be assumed to provide adequate stormwater management. So I would read that thinking you have to meet all of them.
You have to meet all, for, for option number one. We're getting a subgroup confusion here.
Yeah, that's...
So for option number one, you have to meet all three of those criteria to use that option. So that, you're basically not necessarily putting in any green stormwater infrastructure. You're relying on the natural and existing conditions of your lot to be adequate to provide stormwater.
Can you add an "and" after A? Seventy, 7,500 square feet and B, the amount of pervious surface?
It's not perfectly grammatical, but I can...
I mean, just because, yeah, because I was having the same.
It would make, it would do, it would trigger that thought.
Yeah.
Maybe. Right. Is that all right?
Violates the grammar police inside you, but I'll do it.
It what?
Violates my internal grammar police, but I'll do it.
Sorry. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, but...
But yes.
But yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
So, so that's the first option. So basically, the, the LID option is that your site is developed in such a manner that its existing natural conditions are adequate to deal with the water that is generated from what impervious surfaces you have. With option number two, you are providing some sort of green stormwater infrastructure facility. There's a certain amount of size of that area. And that will meet those criteria. It could be a rain garden, you know, with those options before. As long as it's sized to meet proportionally to the area that it's draining, it's good. And the third one is that you submit some sort of engineered plan to show how it is you're achieving this. So you have three options. And so what's different between them is just what the trigger points are in terms of scale, of what area and section.
All right.
No, no, no.
Let's just say...
Absorb it and use it later when it's really hot.
I know. You go outside.
Just think about it, because it'll be... Well, then you hit the wall when you go outside.
It'll be colder in that.
I just have a, a picking thing. I think she's under three, thirty, three-three-three B, three and four, I think the letters where it says C subsection are off by one.
Then four? Yeah, you're right, they are. But don't worry about that, because this is not the official, it's because I was editing it.
Yeah, F and G.
These aren't real cost references yet, and they will be eventually.
Okay. So are we finished with our...
I just want to say, I think this is, you know, good improvement.
I think it's a great improvement.
Kind of meets with our option, and they just go this way, this way.
Right.
Can I just ask one question? The distinction between the multifamily residential and the single, single and two-family residential, for the LID option, you have this combination of, you know, maximum square footage and then percentage of the total lot area, but you don't have that for the multifamily residential. Sorry.
Sorry.
So it, right, there is not the, the total area. That's actually already built in some ways to the system. If you, if you were more than 15,000 square feet, you've got one, don't it down here in B to five? So it doesn't need to be in there twice.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need to be discussing this guy town?
We do. It's a bit of a... Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah. You want to warm up in the office? There's no dog on the ground, so it'll be slow and normal.
There's no dog in there.
I know. I know. Well, he's doing therapy a hump today. So, okay, where is this thing? There has been a cell phone tower application for the back of the Agway property on Wellington Road.
Did you see anything?
Yes. Did you see the blue?
Did I, did you see the blue?
You guys have to drive.
I was wondering what the hell that was for.
That was what it was, that's what it was for. So, these are a series of shots. Some photos, some of these are photoshopped to show you what the ultimate tower is going to be like. And this is the, the location of the, oh, Sue hopefully has it on screen. So, this is sort of the rear of the Agway lot. And I believe this is looking across towards Book Press. And so, we'll just go through these really quickly. These images to show you, to give you a sense of the visual impact, which is a key concern.
So, I mean, this is the others, this is Honey Road. This is a two and a half miles out. There's a, right, is it, there's a, two miles, three miles out?
Right.
Uh, red, sorry, red is locations where blue are visible. And then they've taken pictures by some of these places. So this is, this is actually... Uh, Everderson.
Right.
No, sorry, 91.
That's 91. Okay. So, this is a different way of representing the...
It sounds, it looks like a very large impact to me.
Yes, it's intended to be a large impact because they're intending to fill in lots of cell phone tower, cell phone reception.
This is a driven verified visibility map of this one mile of the site.
Right.
I think it's twenty degrees forward of your...
It's the...
You can connect it. No, 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 no. I have a zoom view here.
So, this is, is heading south of Honey Road. This is a, that's, that's, that's the bridge across 91. That's CNS in the background there.
And this is the...
So it pops up above that. Oh, there you go. It's very cool.
This is from...
Somewhere north. Pendon North.
Photo location.
Right. So you'll be able to see it very clearly from Pendon North after lunch.
Before you, wow.
Oh, that's good.
Right. Yep. Yep. Well, you will be able to call through your order now.
This is Wellington Road off of Old Berry Road, right, Wellington?
No, Wellington is off of...
That's right by Agway.
Yeah, that's right by Agway. That's the suburban gas, suburban propane gas yard. That's with the tower in.
Uh, this is from I-91 southbound. That's the B U S out.
Right.
And this is from the intersection of Locust Lane and Meadowview Road.
Yeah, that's where this...
Tower View Road, Meadowview.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Is it?
Oh, I know where you are. No, it's off Black Mountain Road.
Yeah, it's up Black Mountain Road.
Is it in Devers?
Uh, not quite. It's getting there.
It's good, yeah.
It's still brown.
It's still brown. Yeah, I know where it is.
Yeah. Okay.
That's where they bond. This is Spalding Hill Road.
That's a dumb...
This is in Chesterfield?
Yep.
Because this is the new...
That's what people talk about in the book.
That's peace tower boundary.
You were driving fast, Sue.
The building's flooring?
No, she goes, she was in so many places.
Yeah, really. The river.
Your view, Eric.
Right, Eric's view.
That's my view. Actually, you hug this side, you stay out of the current.
Downtown.
Wow.
We won't see it.
You won't see it.
They're just taking locations, not visible.
That's James's office.
Not visible. It's two of the guys coming down.
Hanson.
Uh, this is, uh, from what learning.
Right.
Not visible. This is west, oh, this is still my home. This is the new development off of Black Mountain Road, Buttonwood Drive.
Visible.
This is 91, northbound, to the bridge, this is coming down to the bridge right now.
Now, just, don't move that shot.
There's the Franken tree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what the Germans call them.
The Franken tree.
This is a Franken tree. So...
Yeah.
Frankenstein tree.
This is a cell phone tower.
This is a cell phone tower.
And so is that part of the requirements, that it be, like, you're putting in a regular cellphone, but will it actually be a Franken tree?
No.
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 This is, this is a stealth monopine, which is its brain name.
It's like this, uh, Austin.
Oh, cranky.
Is it literally like a tree that they put in front of?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's only like a certain distance does it come down?
Right. Yes. So the tree covers...
Disguise.
But below it, by this point, it's just a pole. So, but realistically, when you, uh, this is the most exposed it ever appears. I mean, when you're driving this corridor, it does not really stand out. It's...
No.
I've never seen it.
It works, it works when it's in a grope.
Yes.
There you go.
I've never seen it. Not until we were on the New Jersey Turnpike, Fred was laughing out loud at their bad fake trees. And I was like, "What are you talking about?" And he's like, "We have one. It's much better."
So now you know to order up the...
Stealth.
Stealth monopine.
Stealth monopine. I don't know if it would work right there. That'd be quite a pine.
So where's this?
This is the Bullflex Field.
Right. So in other words, yeah, so anyway...
That's not going to work so well with the name.
So, the, the permitting strategy that they've adopted here is to go through section two forty-eight. Thank you, Sue. There are three buildings in that picture, right? So, um... No, okay.
They're going through act of, section two forty-eight, which means it gets, they look at it like they do wind, solar and wind projects. Trying to bypass this.
It's a certificate of public good strategy, and so the public's good may be met by...
Better coverage.
Better coverage for mobile phone use, and that is a stated policy of the administration that they see a connection between economic activity and cellphone reception. So, they'll see that this does an important technical thing for coverage in this valley, and the proposal will meet the public good. We have very limited scope for commenting on the need or the impact of the project. We can draw attention to the visual impact. What we don't have to support our case in this instance is
Clear.
Clear standards in the town plan that could be referenced. And even if we were to have that, because it's located in an industrial district, it's highly unlikely we would have called out an industrial district for somewhere that we wanted sensitive treatment of things from an aesthetic standpoint. So...
We have no height limitations on building?
No, it's covered by the Federal Communications Commission anyway, and so it's not, we cannot, we could not impact the height.
I think that, you know, sending in a letter that does get out of aesthetic concerns. It does seem like there's part of the statute that says that they'll also look at the public's use and enjoyment of the I-89 and I-91 scenic corner corridors, or of any highway that has been designated as a scenic road. We have the Molly, Molly Stunt, which is scenic, but we can't see it. The Connecticut, I mean...
But 91?
91, yeah. I mean, that's our...
Ironically, in a weird kind of way, the visual impact is, is minimal on the I-91 corridor and is actually really significant once you're down lower or another position in the town. So, I don't know if they carefully selected the site so that it would meet some standard of...
What I passed out there is if you're interested in understanding how the regulatory bodies in Vermont review aesthetics, because it's kind of a two-part test. So it's not rooted at your...
Right. We don't think we're going to meet the standards of the test. Nevertheless, we feel like this is an opportunity where we should articulate communities' views on the visual impact. The other part about this is, is that it's not, it's not something where if we and some, and other parties complain or criticize this site, the applicant would be required to show why this site was superior for technical reasons over alternate sites. There's no way in which the regulators can go back to the applicant and say, "Show us all the other sites you looked at." They just have to say, "This is the one we picked." Like, either you say yes to this, or you don't say yes to this.
Can you show the other sites they looked at?
No, because we don't have the technical information that would form the basis for that.
What's the height of that tower?
I think they're proposing it to be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty.
And what's the range of a rifle? If you shoot it?
I thought that's what she meant.
I thought that there was a perfectly good flagpole on there.
I was disappointed, disappointed to take advantage of it.
Both flags has a chimney there.
Right.
Yeah.
Can we hang a flag from it?
We can hang a something.
I mean, that would be...
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, and look at the hospital chimney. It's peppered with cell towers.
Right. Yes, exactly.
So our choice then is, do we write a letter, or do we not write a letter?
Let's write a lot.
Let's write a letter.
One of the things that I, when I was doing some research yesterday, I found some criticism of the Public Service Board in that they have a, like, our local zoning would require decommissioning or taking it down when it's, once it's not in use.
Right. It is done.
And theirs do not. So even commenting on that would be important.
Yeah.
Useful.
Go for it. So maybe other items like that.
And I think, is it possible to point out other, like, what we were just talking about, like, alternatives? You know, like, putting it on the, the new flagpole?
I think we can point it out.
We can point out that one of the flaws in the process is that the applicant only has to show their side. They don't have to do, they don't have to show...
They don't have to do an alternative analysis.
Yeah. Right. And I think it's a flaw in the regulatory process.
Has the Public Service Board ever been sued?
Only by H G.
I don't know.
I don't.
There, there was some sort of, there is a solar sighting group, though. I mean, there is kind of an increasing concern statewide that the aesthetics of some of these, that the, that the criteria doesn't work.
Yeah.
Necessarily in a public service board site. And that people are concerned that, you know, especially with the proliferation of solar installations, that, you know, the aesthetic stuff is kind of being wiped over.
Discounted.
And they're kind of, you know, all the laws, the billboard, all that stuff that was designed to protect Vermont scenic nature is all kind of undermined by the public service board. And I think that there was some sort of, so now there actually is a solar sighting.
Yes, and it's already, it's already attracted quite a bit of controversy because it's stacked by developers. Developers, Green Mountain Power. Developers, Green Mountain Power and, you know, advocates for solar power and not particularly representative of the municipal or community concern about the impacts of the project. So I think, I, you know, it's one of those tilting of windows exercises. Yeah, right. It's a contemporary win. Tilted itself. So I think it's important that you, as a commission, give, give consideration to commenting on it. We can draft the comments. I think it's reasonable to expect that the select board would be interested to hear from the planning commission and likely to either endorse those remarks or make their own of a similar vein. I'm expecting that staff will be involved in supporting their discussion of the same project. But similarly, they're aware of the very limited ability to change the outcome.
Do we all agree that a letter should be written?
Yeah.
The Conservation Commission was interested in co-signing on any letters.
Excellent.
Yeah. Right. Okay.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Now you can go, Walmart.
Now go have some hot chocolate.